Good morning. It is 11:00 a.m. on April 19, 2022. Excuse me, this afternoon or this evening at 6 o'clock, we have a council meeting, a regular council meeting, but this at this time, this morning is a special meeting for the purpose of considering a draft redistricting plan. We have looked at four maps at this point in time, one that is dated for 1922, and then three that are numbered, 1, B2, and C. Today, we're to consider the map that is dated for 1922. The background in very brief form is that on April 13, council requested GIS and the former master to adjust the voter-approved map to the population excluding precinct considerations relative to the location of any particular individual. So Paul Newman has drafted that map and has it ready to explain to us in as much detail as we need right now. And I would just point out to the people listening that, just as FYI, we do have only three counselors present this morning, and we hope that we can make a decision this morning with that number. And if that doesn't materialize, we know that there is the need to move forward as rapidly as we can tomorrow or the next day. So we will proceed. And Paul Newman, if you could give us an overview of this map, we'd appreciate it.
Very good. I'll start as soon as I can share my screen.
We do see the map, just FYI.
Oh, I have a PowerPoint deck that I'd like to go through. It'll be the same, same map, and go from there. But I think I can share my screen now. All right, can everyone see the additional map? Right. Okay, so my instructions from last week were to start, we'll start fresh, start from the beginning. So here we have the the map that was presented on the ballot last November and was approved on it. Can you see my mouse?
That looks where it is.
It's up on District 5.
Yes, it's pretty small, but can see it's just over the word target in District 5.
Yes, yes, okay. Well, I'll try to be more descriptive also where I'm pointing the mouse, but thank you. Thank you for the feedback. All right, so with this original map, we see the population deviation from ideal. So, for example, with District 5, we see it's 400 people below target. But this is the starting point. Also, along with all the RCW guidance, we also want to keep the updated district boundaries in line with existing election precinct boundaries. So in a sense, these are our bricks that we use to make adjustments. So to go onto that detail a little bit more with election precincts, each precinct has a population that's generated from census estimates. Here we see, for example, this precinct here on the boundary, 439 people. So the task is to move the boundary so that districts that need population will receive those those election precincts. In a nutshell, to create the proposal that you see today dated for 1922, required about seven steps, and what you see here are the sequence of those steps. To to get a fresh start or try to do, look at this differently, I started on the east side of the county and moved moved west. So as you see, I started with this area marked number one, moved that into District 5, then number two, and onward, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then 7 were the steps I took to reach the the population deviation that you see here on this on this map, which is certainly much lower than on the original map. One moment. Right. So the outcome of this proposal are not only the population numbers that you see on the map, but also the percentages in this table. The point here being that the population deviation from the target is less than 1% for all districts. Also, compaction, looking at compaction, which is also one of the RCW items is presented here, comparing it to, I know there's a lot here, but in a nutshell, comparing it to some of the other alternatives, it had the best score for compaction. We've looked at this graph for this chart before with the average in the middle and the the minimum and maximum. You know, when I say it's better or it's the best score, it's it's small. If you're looking here, 0.44 others, there's 0.39 from last week. But I think one of the things that adds to the higher score are the straight lines that you see in the district boundaries. For example, the northern portion of District 3 follows Northeast 98th Street. It's just a nice straight line. And I think that, I guess, in the redistricting work that I've done, I often hear from people asking for for straight lines for ease of understanding. I'll also mention that to create this this proposal, only 12 election precincts had to be moved to a different precinct, somewhat reflective of the map we saw earlier. But here, those those precincts are highlighted. With that, are there any questions?
Counsel, do you have questions? Well, let me just say that you came forward with Map 1 in absolute record time and responding with exactly what I think counsel had communicated to you, and you have done that again. You are a professional at this, and thank you so much for your responsiveness and and your the excellence that you you have used in coming forward with this. Now, let me ask once again, are there any questions from from counsel? And if not, we'll begin discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I yelled this time.
Good, I heard you.
Yeah, I have a hard time being recognized here, being all alone on the dais. So I do have some questions and comments right away, if I may.
Please go ahead, Counselor Medvigi.
So thank you, Paul, for this work that you've once again done. What I'm focused on and like your input on is, you know, measuring all that we've been measuring, you know, the criteria against the B2 map. And I tried to, one, I want to get this done today, so I'm hoping we can move it forward. Last meeting, I tried to move the B2 map, but for procedural reasons, it didn't look like it was going to happen. How does this compare to the B2 map as far as population deviation, compactness? Because there's some benefit to going back to the B2 map. One, it received the most votes at an independent party, a committee, a redistricting committee. I mean, most of the criticism we've had, although unfounded, revolves around revolves around the part that it's dumped on our lap by operational law instead of the redistricting committee. So we had three votes there and a lot of public comment about simply adopting that map. It looked pretty good as far as not changing or advantaging any particular party or group. We actually even had a lawsuit because of the voting disagreement on procedure at that redistricting committee. I mean, had that lawsuit won, then most likely the B2 map would have been adopted because there were already three votes for it. So it would place it back into that redistricting committee format because I, the same sense that I have that we've been poorly attacked by the community by a few because we're now looking at it. I mean, it's the same discussion that happens at the state level and around the nation. Everyone attacks whoever's doing the redistricting. You know, it would take it back out of that and put it into the redistricting committee. And, you know, the staff working for the county at some level, working ultimately for the county council, would be subject to the same exact criticism of trying to maneuver things away from an independent bipartisan attempt. So I want to get back to that bipartisan map. But so if you could just go ahead through the criteria, and how does B2 compare to this latest map? Thank you.
Right. Let's look at it from two standpoints. Population at first, okay, this is this may be the best way to look at it, and I'll zoom in so it's not so messy. Wait for this to refresh. So I'm on this live map. I'm showing both B2 in blue and then the draft proposal for 1922 in red. Zoom in just a little further. And displayed are the are the deviations from population for each district. So for example, in 5, red being the new proposal is 468 below target. Blue, the B2 proposal is 78 above. And then on on around District 2, 684 above versus minus 27 and on. Looking at population, there is a difference. I think the overall population deviation for B2 is, if you add it all, add all the deviation up, it's about nearly 600. And if you add all the deviation for the new proposal, it comes up to about 1,368. So there is a difference. Regarding compaction, the new proposal is better in terms of has a better score. Let me bring that back forward again on the PowerPoint. There we go. So here's B2 in this column. And maybe I can zoom in here a little bit. And see the labels. All right. You know, as I said, the new proposal is just a little better than in terms of compactness than B2. B2 is over here on the on the left, looking at these these blue columns with, again, the red dots, the average. It's just a small improvement. So that's, you know, how much is that? It's it's I, regarding compaction, I'd like to maybe jump to one, one way that compaction has helped me sort things out. Jump over this slide and so looking at, this is, this happens to be series of alternatives. B2 is included here, but the new alternative is not. A point of this slide is that, as we worked with the redistricting committee to really narrow the population deviation to as close to zero as possible, the compaction also became worse, or the compaction score has declined as well. So this is alternative B, which we really haven't talked too much about. Here's B2. Before, again, was not really talked about, but it's an example here where we really got population deviation, you know, low, very low, but also the the compaction started to suffer as well. And this map on the right tries to explain why and what that looks like on a map. Blue, again, is is B. And then red is B4, which is, again, the lowest compaction score, but also the best population. But I think what would be best highlighted here along 164th is, is to get the population near zero, we had to start switching out precincts. So here's, for example, we brought this precinct in, District 3, and then, you know, switched this one out just to, just to get the the population down just by a little bit. But the result was that it created these more complex lines that you see in red, and that those more complex lines caused compaction to the compaction score to to decline. Same here on the upper, upper left. The blue is the original, yep, which, you know, has a few curves to it. But you see that these two precincts were swapped out again, just to try to, you know, each of these precincts, especially in this area, might have anywhere from 1,000 people to 1,500 people. And so it was switching these precincts out was just a method or was was used to bring the population down. But as we did that, it added to the compactness, it added to more confusing lines. Does this help?
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-on question about the precincts? Because that was something the auditor was harping on quite a bit early on in the process. He was hoping that he wasn't going to have to go through and move a lot of precincts. Between the current map that you are showing us today and the B2 map, which map would cause him more work at at the auditor's office?
Actually, they came in as a tie, I believe, the 12. I think that was back to this. First of all, the, you know, what's something that the auditor was hoping for us to avoid was splitting of any precincts. And that has not been done, but still with the with the adoption of redistricted redistricted map, there will have to be notices sent out to to registered voters in terms of precinct changes or according to the districts. Both B2 and the current proposal would require 12 election precincts to be moved to a different different district, which is highlighted here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. And thank you, Paul, for
Counselor Medvigi, I have a question of you. Given your initial comments on B2 and the response that you received from Mr. Newman, do you wish to make a motion so that we can continue discussion?
Chair, I had a question for Paul.
Just just a moment. I've got a question for the Counselor Medvigi.
I just had a question that didn't get called on.
We'll, we'll take out
So I am happy to make a motion to adopt B2 for all the reasons I stated at the onset, but I certainly don't want to stifle discussion or cut Counselor Lenz off from asking a question.
That does not stop discussion. It allows us to continue. I'll second the motion. Counselor Lenz?
Yes, I had a question for Paul. Paul, a question about the election precincts list that you presented. Just had a couple of questions from constituents, and I think that I know the answer, but I just want to clarify on the record for anyone listening. Looking at the list of precincts that was attached with this map, the list says there's precinct, the next column is counselor district current, and the next column is counselor district in the proposed map. When we say current on that list, the current map that is referenced is the map that was in the Voters Guide, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. There was just some confusion because we have the districts in which everyone was elected a year or two ago or four years ago, and then we have what was passed by the voters, and then we have what's been proposed. So there was some concern about what is current. I did, my answers to some folks were that I believe it was the Voters Guide map, but I just wanted to make sure that was correct. And so for folks who have been confused about what current means, now we know, and it's on the record. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. If I recall correctly, at the one of the redistricting committee meetings right near the end of the time period when they had been reformulated, did they make a change to the B2 map that is incorporated here?
Yes, we made a very small change to the B2 map that is incorporated in the B2 map. I think the B2 map with that update is dated in February, perhaps January. It it just involved 50 people and maybe two acres of land.
I see. So with what, if B2 were to be adopted and taken to hearing, would that then be included in that B2 map?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions or comments from counsel?
Chair?
Yes, Counselor Lenz?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think it's unfortunate that this is the motion on the floor. At the last meeting, three or four counselors agreed to recuse themselves from the process of trying to draw a map, given that the process has been compromised since the beginning, when even the past chair started that compromise process by interfering in the selection of the redistricting committee. As we heard at great length from the public, this council, the community had a lot of questions about this council's ability to make a well-reasoned decision. We sent it back to GIS. And Paul, I do just want to take a moment also to thank you. You were, you showed incredible patience and diligence through this entire process, which has gone on quite a long time. And I really appreciate the fact that you were able to go back and do this work and do your best to remove the policy direction from from your awareness and go back and work on these maps as the council requested. And you showed that by working from east to west instead of west to east, by really trying to take the map and the data as you were looking at it into consideration so that you were not influenced by policy direction from either the compromised redistricting committee or the compromised county council. I think that what you created, as you showed, it has population deviation of less than 1% every in every district, and the compactness scores remain strong. In addition to those pieces, we also, by your creation of this alternative that you presented today, have an alternative that has not been influenced by compromised policymakers. So this is really, this is the map that we should advance, and I'm disappointed that that is not the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, Counselor Medvigi.
Thank you. So I do want to clarify something and add or restate some of the comments I made earlier. I didn't vote to recuse myself, otherwise we wouldn't be here today. And so that wasn't part of the vote. It was to send it back to Paul Newman and the GIS staff to take another stab at this without looking at counselor residences, locations. And that was the substance of it. So to characterize that as a recusal, I'm not doing that. And the same problem we had and as you're expressing, and rightfully so, we shouldn't have this process in our lap. It looks untoward. It's a charter failure. I mean, the charter should have this, if the redistricting committee didn't agree, it should have gone to the court. Because I have full faith and confidence in impartiality and independence of our courts for good reason. And, you know, and I would say too, just for transparency, I did everything I could to get these issues resolved during the lawsuit before the court. But we had no champion, no advocate, no lawyer to actually take those issues before the judge to get them all resolved, which would have been a better process. And I'm hoping that in the future, we have a charter amendment that sees that as the best course, not back to the council. We are following the law as it exists, but to the court. That would be a better process. And that's, so I want to restate the reasons, you know, the redistricting bipartisan committee handled this and recommended B2. And so it takes away all those tanks that you just listed once again. You know, GIS works for us. GIs works for the manager who works for us. The same issues are there. The issues don't exist with that bipartisan redistricting committee that recommended B2, which in population numbers does a better job. Everything else pretty much looks pretty equal. So anyway, that's why I made the motion to adopt B2. I would have liked to have seen it adopted last meeting procedurally, if we could have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
Yes, Chair, I need to correct a factual error in the counselor's previous statements. I made the motion last week. I have the motion in front of me. It's in the record. We can go back if you'd like and listen to the recording, or I can read it for you here. I move that the council recues ourselves from the process of drawing lines and ask county manager to direct staff to create a map that meets state guidelines, adjusting the voter-approved map from November for updated census data without regard for policy direction previously received, and specifically excluding a consideration for the precincts in which counselors live. Once created, the council may then accept the map or adjust the presented map as laid out in the voter-approved charter. That was the motion made, and that was voted yes by three counselors.
Counselor Lenz.
Just wanted to make it clear.
I'm sorry, question. I believe you're clarifying the terminology recusal. In your judgment, did that take place? Or is it taking place? Is that satisfied, in other words?
I'm simply correcting a statement that Counselor Medvigi said that he didn't vote on something that he voted on. So I'm simply correcting that.
I understand. And I'm just wondering, did that occur in your judgment? Or is it occurring now? Is is your motion realized factually?
Um, I think that factually, the motion is not being realized. And I don't think that recusal is the problem. I think that it's actually the last sentence of the motion, which is, once created, the council may then accept the map or adjust the presented map as laid out in the voter-approved charter. So, you know, this council can can take whatever votes it wants. That's part of the liberty of being elected officials. But I just wanted to clarify, since it didn't appear that everybody knew what they were voting on. since it didn't appear that everybody knew what they were voting on. So I just wanted to read it again into the record.
So the recusal did take place?
Yes, in the sense that Paul did bring forward a map.
Okay, very good. And in that sense, Counselor Medjig, you can see what Counselor Lenz was saying.
It is of no consequence whatsoever. So if we're, a recusal usually means for all purposes for all time. So are we not going to vote today? If we're going to vote today, we're not recusing. So I appreciate your clarification.
Counselor Medjig, we will be voting as soon as we're finished with discussion. No problem.
Okay, thank you. So what I would ask Counselor Lenz to consider is, one, the B2 map was created by a bipartisan committee according to our charter. But for a voting irregularity in the charter, it didn't pass. It was the map preferred by the Democrats, in fact. It removes this process entirely. Should we just simply adopt that map? You know, as far as this recusal issue and this bad appearance of the council being involved in this process. You know, it was the same thing that they had, the community had asked our court, our Supreme Court to do. You know, even though the state redistricting committee had not met their deadline, everyone was saying, please, please just adopt it, which they did. So I'm making that same request. I think it satisfies all of your concerns and it moves us forward. Hopefully, I'm showing 11:30 now. I don't know how much more debate or discussion. I think we've looked at all the facts. I would, we have so much more on our plate than this issue that was foisted on us by a failure of the redistricting committee procedurally to adopt the map.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Lenz?
As I previously said, the word recusal is really not the problem here. The last sentence of the motion that three of four council members voted on last week was this. Once created, the council may then accept the map or adjust the presented map as laid out in the voter-approved charter. That process in the charter is that the council may make adjustments to the boundaries presented in the map, I believe it is with a deviation in population of 2% or less per district affected. So that is what the council voted on last week. If the council moves the B2 map forward today, the council is not doing what it voted to do last week.
My understanding is that we have had discussion and familiarity with four maps and that any one of those can be considered. And at this time, the motion is to move forward B2 to hearing. So if we're ready to vote on that, let's go ahead. Is there any further comment that you feel must be made? Okay, all the, the motion is to take map B2 to hearing on April 27. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
So the vote is two to one. And because we need a vote of three persons in order to have a decision, I'm sorry, my WebEx just totally disappeared and is not running. So I cannot see anyone at all at this point. It's very strange. But at any rate, with a vote of two to one, the motion is defeated because we need three votes in order to have approval. So let's move the discussion forward again as I attempt to get my WebEx back. And if there is any further motion, we could take, accept that.
Well, Chair, I move to accept the draft proposal as presented today, labeled Draft Proposal 04-19-2022.
Okay, and is there a second? Hearing no seconds? Is there further discussion or another motion? And I am sorry, I still cannot get my WebEx back. So if anyone wishes to speak, please let me know.
Well, I'll push my button. I'm not sure if there's any suggestion by the lawyer or the manager as to, I mean, I guess by default, we end up with a map that does not comply with law. The original map passed with very little transparency and poor census data. I'm assuming that's what happens. If we're not able to adopt a map formally, then it just defaults to the raw map that results from the ballot measure.
Counselor Medjig?
Leslie Lopez, would you comment?
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor Medjig, for your question. So similar to how the redistricting committee did their work when they were working on drafts, what the council can do is can continue this hearing to tomorrow. There is council time and at that time, have further discussion regarding a draft plan. There is a public hearing set for April 27th and according to the statute, which is 29A76010, the council is required to publish the draft plan one week before adopting it. So what that would mean is tomorrow, the council, in order to meet the April 27 meeting, would have to agree on a map to submit as a, and meant a draft plan moving forward. If it didn't happen tomorrow, you could continue it to a special meeting on Thursday, but then you would have to also continue the April 27 meeting to the 28th. We can certainly talk about contingencies after that, but that is the process that could occur.
It seems like there would be some advantage in this case to actually having a special meeting on Thursday. The reason being, there is the possibility of one of the counselors who's excused today that might be able to attend on Thursday. Do not know for sure, but it's a possibility. And I think that tomorrow, it would still be the same three of us in attendance. And so probably, the same discussion would just repeat itself tomorrow. That's my thought. Would anyone else care to comment?
On Thursday, I was hoping to do other things. I've made other appointments. Friday, I'd be available.
Just to provide some additional clarification as well. So if, if the meeting was on Thursday, as Leslie mentioned, the hearing next week would have to be continued to the following day. If the work session or the council discussion is not until Friday, there would not be a hearing in time to get this to the auditor's office for filing, to have the map done before filing deadline, which is okay. There's nothing against the law for that. It's just that the map, when people are filing, will not know what precinct they're in during that time because their deadline is next week.
And therefore, the deadline, so to speak, for us to have a special meeting would be Thursday?
Yes, that is correct. In order to meet the auditor's deadline. And we would again continue the hearing next Wednesday to the Thursday of the 28th, which is the date that they need the information by.
Good, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This also goes to the discussion of our rules of procedure that we'll have tonight because this was an unscheduled meeting for Thursday. I could be available on Thursday if we did it in the evening.
I would propose that we do that. I would certainly make myself available. Counselor Lenz, can you?
I can't. I already have plans.
When might you be available on Thursday, Counselor Lenz?
Looking. Between 11 and 1. Or between 2 and 3.
Or what?
2 and 3.
I'll offer another option. And although I prefer coming and being here in person, I could probably make a narrow window if I just zoomed in from my home, which I prefer not to do, but that may help facilitate having another meeting.
It may. Which of the times that Counselor Lenz is available would be best for you to do that?
I'm sorry, Counselor Lenz, what was the second time period? Was it 3?
2 to 3.
What time did you say? 2 to 3?
2 to 3.
2 to 3 would be my preference.
Is that okay with staff?
Yes, 2 to 3 should work and I will follow up with the other counselor as well. We will have to do a 24-hour special meeting notice, which staff can get out today.
Okay, very good. So.
Chair?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. I still feel that it is, sorry, my screen just went weird. I still feel that it's unfortunate that this council is not following through on the motion that it made last week and that was voted on and approved by the council. And we have a map that is in front of us that meets all of the state qualifications, follows the law, and further has the added necessary benefit of removing partisanship and policy from the process. It is deeply unfortunate and dispiriting to see that that is not the map that two members of this council want to move forward. That said, continuing to drag this out for multiple meetings where the council appears to need to consider to put their own personal preferences before the community is ridiculous. So in the interest of moving this forward so that we can get a map done that will then bring forward what it brings forward in terms of support opposition or lawsuits, I would have us go back and I will make a motion that was already made to move forward the B2 map as preferred by two members of the council here today.
And thank you very much. I will second that motion, but I have a question for Leslie Lopez. That involves reconsideration of a matter at the same meeting to go back and reconsider the vote. Would you comment on that, please?
Thank you, Chair Berman. That's a good question. And I agree that that's, because that motion has already been discussed in the same meeting, it cannot be redone in the same meeting, but it can be brought up at a subsequent meeting.
Question. I thought that it could be brought up at the same meeting by a member from the prevailing side, which is a weird definition in our current situation.
Yes. Actually, you are correct. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Lenz. I apologize. You are correct. You are, yes. Thank you.
So we can, we can reconsider it today because I voted against it.
Yes, you can reconsider it today based on that. Yes, thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So I had seconded the motion that we, well, it wasn't really that we reconsider. I don't believe that's exactly what you said, but that's what we'll do. So let's not have further discussion. I think it's clear what we would be voting on. Is that correct, Counselor Medjig? Are you ready to vote?
I am ready to vote. Less is more in this circumstance.
All those in favor of moving map B2 forward to hearing on April 27 signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, and there are none. So the motion is carried unanimously. And now we do not need to talk about a meeting for later this week, other than those that are already scheduled on Wednesday, of course. And Kathleen, what else should we know about the scheduling involved with this hearing and the matters prior to that?
We will get the B2 map posted. The public is encouraged to provide written testimony. There will also be an opportunity for the public to provide verbal testimony during the hearing next week. And it's my understanding when I'm looking at Leslie that, that if for some reason, though, there is a change or amendment to the map during the hearing, that's going to have to be put out for the public review for an additional seven days.
That is correct. If there are any changes made to the map after public comment, you have to do the same thing where you post it at least one week before adoption.
And that doesn't include the 50 people or so that were in the discussion that we had with Mr. Newman a bit ago for the changes already made back when it was before the redistricting committee, correct? Does not include that because they're going forward anyway.
Yes. So any change to the map that the council wants to make would have to be resubmitted. If a map, let me ask Leslie, I'll ask Leslie to answer this.
I can go ahead and address that. So basically, what we're talking about is you've just adopted a draft plan, which is the B2 map. So you're going to go ahead and have that published today. And then what happens is from today until the next meeting, people can submit written public comment. If the council chooses, you can also provide public testimony or public comment at the hearing. After that public comment, if the council makes any changes to the B2 map at that time, then according to the statute, the council would then have to repost the map and set another hearing at least one week later to adopt a final map. Does that answer your question, Chair Berman?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding scheduling from the council?
Yes. So if that were to occur, and I'm hoping it does not occur, then we've blown really the deadline for the auditor. And what does that do to filing for offices for all the candidates that are waiting for this to be finalized?
Thanks, Counselor Medjig. So I think your question is if people file before the map, they file before the deadline and then a different map. There's a map that's different than what the current map is and that somehow, the current map that is passed by the council, the person who filed is no longer residing in that district, they will be unable to run for office. That's different than if they are already in office, but that is what will occur.
And that answers your question, Counselor?
Yes, thank you. Let's try to avoid that.
I believe that we are complete with this process at this time. So looking forward to council meeting tonight at 6:00 PM back in the hybrid format. This meeting is, this special meeting is now adjourned.